Ready? Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Today is Wednesday, August 7th, 2024. Commissioners' Court is meeting in special open session. Would you please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good afternoon and welcome to the joint meeting of the El Paso County Hospital District, Board of Managers and the El Paso County Commissioners. Commissioners, thank you for welcoming us into your home. The time is 1:09, and at this point, we would like to call the meeting to order and establish a quorum.
Yes, Mr. Chair, we do have a quorum.
Wonderful. And at this point, can we go into the regular agenda?
Yes.
And would you mind reading those two items into record?
Agenda item number one, discuss and take appropriate action regarding the fiscal year 2025 El Paso County Hospital District operating and capital budget. Agenda item number two, discuss and take appropriate action regarding the proposed tax rate for the El Paso County Hospital District. Mr. R. Jacobstein Thron President and CEO, Mr. Michael Nunez, District Chief Financial Officer.
Commissioners, Jacobstein Thron President and CEO of the El Paso County Hospital District. As we go through this presentation, you're going to hear about some of the performance we've had and the growth we've experienced as a hospital district, what we're doing in terms of our operations, and as well as our budget expectations, not only how we performed in the past, but what we are proposing for the fiscal year 25 budget. And you'll see some areas where we're experiencing some growth that are very positive for us in the El Paso health side, being able to pick up the STAR Plus program, which will add some revenue for us and will, for the first time, allow us to then start looking at patients that are 65 and older. Typically, they've been looking at young, you know, young adults and children. You'll also be able to see some growth anticipated at El Paso Children's, once we open that eighth-floor shell that should be completed so that they can begin operating in October, and provides them additional 26 beds. And then we have some growth opportunities that are going to be reflected in the budget as well. Michael will start with going over the brief schedule of events in terms of the budget, and then we're going to have John Law go over some of the data points that we have for our budget, to be followed then by Maria Zampini, our Chief Operating Officer, and she'll go over some of the growth we've experienced as a district over the last few years. So, Michael?
May I interrupt for a moment while I read in our items, please? Thank you. This afternoon, we're joined by ASL interpreters Stephanie Michelle and Ayeli Cabral. I also needed to announce that our YouTube feed is down, but we are streaming on our internal stream, so that is concurrent. We have our item number three, public comment. Do we have anybody in the audience that would like to provide public comment at this time? Hearing none will take no action. Item number four from the regular agenda, for A, receive a presentation regarding the fiscal year 2025 El Paso County Hospital District operating and capital budget, and item number four B, discuss and take appropriate action on the El Paso County Hospital District's capital and operating budgets for fiscal year 2025 and proposed tax rate. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Michael Nunez, the Hospital District Chief Financial Officer. I will lead it off with the budget timetable. There is one slight change that happened this past week. We initially were planning, or the tax assessor was going to be here this previous Monday to present the organization's UMCs, no new revenue, and voter approval tax rate. That's going to happen now on Monday, August 12th. So currently, right now, we are August 7th, looking to do our first budget work session. The second budget work session, if needed, is currently scheduled for Thursday, August 22nd. And then currently, right now, what is slated, and working with the county staff, there's a tentative date for a public hearing on tax rate, if needed. Currently, right now, that's Monday, August 19th. And then our goal, or per the calendar, is to bring back the, on Monday, August 26th, the, to the court, so was it to approve the UMC's operating budget, capital budget, that service budget, and also tax rate. So with that, I'm going to turn this over now to John Law, who's going to take us in terms of, you know, some of the history that we've had with the El Paso County Hospital District.
Commissioners, good afternoon. John Law, I'm the District Chief Strategy Officer for the El Paso County Hospital District. I just want to walk through a little bit of our growth and talk a little bit about what that means. As you can see here, you can see the district's growth in revenue and expenses going back to 2017, and the budget you're going to see proposed today is going to have 1.7 billion in both revenue and expenses. So you can see there's been tremendous growth over the last seven, eight years. What I want to talk a little bit about is what has that growth meant and where, you know, we've, for the most part, we've spent the revenue we've made. And so what does that mean in terms of the organization? One of the areas where we've invested some of our revenue is in our associates, and here you'll see how we've increased the minimum wage up to $15 an hour. What you see in the right column is the first-year cost for that increase from each incremental level. And obviously, that cost continues into the future. So you're essentially only seeing the first-year cost, but you can see what's been invested over time in our associates through this minimum wage increase. And what you're not seeing here as well is actually the compression. So, you know, when we raise the salaries of certain associates, there's associates that also get their salaries raised to make sure there's parity across the position. So you can see that it's a significant investment in our associates to increase the minimum wage.
And John, if I might be able to interrupt just for a second, I thank you all. If you look at 2016 to 2024, and what an impact it has on those employees that ripples all the way across to your MDs, it really is very telling of an organization how they feel about all their employees, not just the doctors and nurses, but how they feel about everybody, and that we understand about the compression. Betsy and I have been talking about that same issue and how it affects us here at the county. We have many of our 381s, people, businesses coming to El Paso, and that's one of the first things we look at is what are they paying their employees? And if we can't walk the same walk, how can we preach something else? So I congratulate you on all your budget, but especially that one item.
Commissioner Leon, the push to go from a $10 minimum wage to 15, really, you all deserve a lot of credit for that, because I remember many discussions where you were concerned about the living wage and how, given all that's been going on with inflation, how that was very difficult. So when you look at the overall impact of just going from $10 to 15, it's about 29 million as an annual impact, not counting compression. I'd seen an earlier number, trying to validate, that said with compression, it was about 55 million more dollars a year with this impact. And we also recognize that today, the $15 may not be enough, and that we may need to look at the, in the near future, getting to a more appropriate level to be able to provide a living wage, and we're still committed to do that. In this fiscal year, you'll find, though, that we didn't include it just simply because, you know, some of the challenges we're facing and the fact that, you know, no secret, we're going to be going for a no-new-revenue rate.
Thank you.
And part of that investment, and obviously, we've developed a whole range of programs, and my ongoing theme is, is where did this, you know, this growth in revenue go? And so we've done a lot of investments in our associates. Lorena Nevado and her team have developed programs to help get loans for first-time homebuyers. We've got a program for associates where they work part-time, and we pay them full-time so they can get education to get promoted. We've also invested in a psychologist. We're adding a second to make sure the behavioral health support is there for our associates. And so what you can see here is just the annualized turnover and how it's declined coming out of the pandemic. So for our associates overall, we've come down to about 11%, and then for our bedside nurses, we've come down to 12%. And I was at a conference last week, and really, the level of turnover we're at is unprecedented when I talk to other organizations around the country. Here you'll see that El Paso Children's has had similar success coming out of the pandemic, and you can see how they've also decreased their annualized turnover overall and also bedside. And so again, this is all part of investments that they've made as well in their workforce. Another area where we've invested and we continue to invest is the education of our future healthcare workforce. And what you're seeing here are students that are getting some type of clinical experience at either UMC or El Paso Children's. And you can see that, you know, at this point, we're providing some clinical education to over 3,000 people that are looking to get into healthcare. And I would venture to guess that we are by far the largest clinical site for students across this country, across El Paso. And this doesn't just include, like nurses, it includes phlebotomists, it includes all the ancillary roles that need different kinds of training that they're getting at University Medical Center and El Paso Children's. We also, over this timeframe, have continued to invest in the fellows and residents with Texas Tech, and you can see the growth there in both sides of the coin. Obviously, the fellows and the residents are the individuals most likely to stay here and practice medicine, so this is a real valuable investment, and you can see how what we spend has increased year over year as well. We continue to be proud of our relationship with Texas Tech. Another place where we've invested our increased revenue is in that partnership with Texas Tech. And in 2023, our contracts and payments to Texas Tech reached almost 98 million. So we continue to be strong partners and key investors in Texas Tech and its success. Beyond that, we've had some other accomplishments, and you can see them on this slide. You know, obviously, the surgical hospital acquisition is a real positive in terms of expanding some capacity for us. I want to highlight the specialists that both UMC and El Paso Children's have been able to recruit. You can see the list of specialties that we've brought on both of our teams. And again, we're really addressing areas where there are no providers, particularly on the pediatric side, or the workforce in these specialties is very weak, and we're trying to build that up. I also want to highlight the pediatric multi-specialty clinic that El Paso Children's has opened this year. You know, again, it's the only multi-specialty clinic for kids, and especially as, you know, we see the data over the last 20 years, we're seeing more kids with multiple diseases, and this type of multi-specialty environment is really key for their care. Here are some accomplishments that are real specific to UMC, and, you know, I've talked already a little bit about the turnover and our reduction there. I want to highlight our clinical documentation initiative. This is an initiative where we've been working with our providers to make sure they're documenting accurately. What we have found historically is they were, in a sense, under-documenting the care that they've provided, and so we've done a lot of training, and we think that attributes about 7 million annually to the bottom line. And the other thing I want to highlight is the Da Vinci Five robot acquisition. We're the only hospital system in the region that has this robot today. We're the first ones to get it, and that provides a valuable resource to increase the quality of care for our system. The last place, again, thinking about where we have invested the revenue that we've grown, we continue to be very proud of our investment in the uninsured. And so if you look at the orange bar, you can see what we've received from the MNO property taxes. In 2025, we estimate that that's going to be about 129 million dollars. And then the blue line shows the cost of the care that's provided to individuals without insurance. And I just want to underscore that that is the cost. A lot of healthcare systems, when they report what they do for the uninsured, they report either their charges or maybe what they would have collected, which are higher numbers. We're actually reporting what is the base cost just to provide that care. And obviously, we're providing more care than we're receiving the MNO dollars for. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Maria Zampini and let her talk about operations.
Good afternoon. So how are we doing? I'm lucky to be able to present these slides because they've, the growth that we've had and the success that we've had has really been measurable and impactful. On the first one, you can see, this first graph, you see the admissions over time, and you see there that between the district between El Paso Children's Hospital and UMC, we've seen a 23, we've seen over 23,000 admissions from the 2017 numbers. So that represents a 28% increase. So if you go back to 2017 to now, and so in order to be able to do that, that's consistent and measurable success year over year. On the outpatient visits, this also shows quite a bit of an increase. And so the outpatient visits for us are all the primary, the specialty care visits. It also includes everything like lab and imaging, the emergency departments, rehab, everything that comes with a physician office visit as well. And so that growth is impressive. In 2017 to now, it's a 56% increase to the district. We're now seeing a little bit over 1.2 million outpatient visits to the district, which is quite a bit. As you may remember, we opened two new clinics in 2017, those were our neighborhood health centers, and two new emergency departments in 2020. And so that helped to get us to where we are now. We're a patient-centered medical home, so what we're doing is actively coordinating the care of each and every patient, and so we bring them in for labs, for pharmaceuticals, for everything that they may need. And so what we want is those clinics to be able to see about 80% and ERs, to see about 80% of what you would need in a lifetime, and that's represented by those, by that number of visits. We've also added many specialists. I think John talked about it as well. And so in those clinics, we now have cardiology, we have endocrinology, we have surgery, orthopedics, all of those, and there's more, but those are some of the specialists that we've added. The Children's Hospital, as John said, has opened up an urgent care and a multi-specialty clinic that adds to their clinic system in the last couple of years. And so all of these efforts have been very successful, and what we're doing is really growing access to healthcare in the El Paso community. So we're putting all of these where the patients are, in the neighborhoods, and you can see how that number has really increased over time. Surgery cases on the next slide, and this also, you see that trend line just increasing as well. So we've grown to over 18,000 surgical cases. That's a 76% increase from where we were in 2017. Major contribution again is just the active recruitment of specialists in neurosurgery, orthopedics, OMFS, and others, but you can see how successful that's been. On the El Paso Health, the STAR and the CHIP market share, El Paso Health has been the market share leader since 2014, and you can see from a trend line that they have 60% of the market, almost 60% of the market in STAR and CHIP. And so combined, if you look at Superior and Molina, which are the two lines below it, we have, El Paso Health has more than what they would have combined. And on the El Paso Health and their membership side, they have about 89,000 members, so that's about roughly 10% of the population that we're covering. And so that's a huge number, and then starting in September, they're going to be adding a little more than 9,300 STAR Plus members, so bringing them to about 100,000 members, which is really good. So positive wins throughout all of these services. And with that, I'll hand it over to Michael, who will talk to us about our financial health. Thank you.
Okay, Michael Nunez, Hospital District Chief Financial Officer. On Slide 21, I do want to present where we are with our latest bond rating agencies. We've had a lot of activity with the rating agencies, particularly because we are doing some refunding of some of our bonds. In fact, the settlement date is going to be on Tuesday. So we did enlist Croll at the recommendation of Hilltop Securities, and also our bond syndicate, we decided to go with another rating agency, Croll. Now, Croll does rate the public safety hospitals differently than, say, like Moody's, partly because they do put more emphasis on the general obligation tax-backed debt that we have. So in fact, about last week, they did come out with a double A-, stable outlook, and this was about a week ago. Then also Fitch Ratings, they had earlier in March done a rating update for us, of which it was A- with a stable outlook. Because of the bond refundings we are doing next week, they did do another reassessment, and they did maintain the current A- stable outlook as well. And about two weeks ago, we did have our annual surveillance with Standard and Poor's, although we're not going to be using Standard and Poor's for the bond refundings, they reaffirmed at their current rate of where we are, A triple B+, stable outlook, and that was done about two weeks ago. And then the last one with Moody's. Now, we haven't been evaluating them since about, was it September of '22, and we have the lowest rating with them at a B double A, too. So that's a current picture of our, of the bond rating, bond rating agencies, I guess, report card on the hospital district. Any questions on that?
Michael, just a quick, for your, I'd like to know what your opinion is. Why is there such a difference between Croll and Moody's?
Yeah. On Croll, going back to what I had mentioned, they do put more emphasis on the general obligation tax-backed debt that we do have, whereas like Moody's, they don't place as much emphasis on that, and they do evaluate us such as we are across the board, such as a regular for-profit hospital. So that's the main difference between the rating methodology between Croll and what Moody's would be.
So Moody's is rating you just as though you were a for-profit hospital?
Similar to a for-profit, like HCA and Tenet, in terms of when we start looking at our margins versus like Tenet and a HCA for-profits margins, and how ours are lower. So that's how their, that's how their rating system is compared to Croll.
As a point of comparison, if you look at Fitch, they rated UMC, the district, as an A-, they've rated HCA as a double B-plus stable, which is lower, and they've rated Tenet as a B-plus positive, which is also lower. So these are for-profit organizations, they carry a lot of debt, and they, and we have a higher rating through Fitch than HCA and Tenet, though clearly, as a for-profit, they generate more revenue because there's not that public mandate that they provide uncompensated care at all levels.
Thank you.
Now, talking now, as we get into the details of the fiscal year 2025 budget, first off, what I do want to emphasize is on the left pie chart is going to be what the district 25, 2025 revenue budget is, so it's going to be right short of a 1.7 billion. We're with that when you're looking at net patient service revenue of 755 million or 45% of the hospital district budget. Now, that is net patient service revenue for both UMC and El Paso Children's. Looking at the orange piece, this is premium revenue, this is El Paso Health. Now, you'll, later on in the presentation, you'll see that their premium revenue is going to increase about 200 million from 2024 to 2025, and that's because of the, of them getting into STAR Plus starting September 1st. So their, so their revenue is 533 million or 32% of the district's operating budget. Our Medicaid supplemental revenue, this is for primarily UMC, although El Paso Children's does get some Medicaid supplemental revenue, that's about 7%. And then property tax revenue, as Jacob alluded earlier, this budget does assume going with a no-new-revenue rate. Currently, we're estimating that to be about 152 million in total. About 24 million of that's going to be for debt service, and then the remaining is going to be for maintenance and operations. So property tax revenue as a whole represents about 9%. And then we have other revenues, about 111 million, 7%. On the right side will be what makes up the district 2025 On the right side will be what makes up the the district 2025 expense budget, also just short of about 1.7 billion. Salaries and wages, 26% or about 434. And this is for all entities, whether it's University Medical Center, El Paso Children's, El Paso Health, the two foundations. Our employee benefits is about 90 million or 5%. Physician fees, these are the fees that we that we pay to our providers, whether it's Texas Tech, local community physicians for for coverage contracts, medical directorships, et cetera, or purchase services, 121 million. Supplies and pharmaceuticals, this is medical supplies, pharmaceuticals for both UMC and El Paso Children's. This is about 237 million, 14%. Now, the green piece is going to be the medical claims. This is with El Paso Health. Now, you'll see on the revenue side in the orange part, that's about 533 million in premium revenue. But in medical expenses, we expect to pay about 463 million. And I'll refer to later on what's called a medical loss ratio. What a medical loss ratio is, for every dollar of premium revenue that El Paso Health gets from the state, about 89%, 88% of that is is used to pay medical claims to the hospitals or to or to providers. And then you you'll see the other components, our other depreciation and amortization, which is noncash. I'll be talking about that later as well. That's about 57 million. And then our interest on our debt is about 17 million. So those are the major components when you look at the revenue budget and the expense budget for the hospital district for 2025. When you're looking now at the what we are presenting for fiscal year 2025 as a whole, the combined total is looking to be a positive increase in net position or net assets of about $3.3 million. When you look at it from an individual component unit basis, you'll see UMC is about 15, about $16 million negative. And there's one main reason for that, which I'll be talking about that here in about two more slides. El Paso Health, we're looking at about 5.5 million increase in net position for 2025. El Paso Children's, about 8.6 million increase in net position. The foundation, now here it's labeled UMC Foundation, but it's actually both, the UMC Foundation and El Paso Children's foundations with their with them. Them also continue to grow at about $3.3 million. So when you look at cash flow from operations, you see that the increase in net position is about 3.3 million. But that does include the noncash depreciation and amortization expense of about 57 million. So when you look at what do we generate cash cash flow from operations, that's about 60 million. Later on, I'll be talking about where do we use that 60 million? About half of it's going to our debt service in terms of interest and principal payments. And then the other half is going to routine capital capital investment for both for all three, UMC, El Paso Children's, and El Paso Health. In talking about some of the major components for each of the individual component units, let's talk about UMC. First off, the the biggest uncertainty or the biggest challenge that we have in our 2025 year, and I think we've been talking about this over the past couple of years, are the federal Medicaid disproportionate share cuts currently right now. And this goes back to when the Affordable Care Act was passed back in 2010, that Congress had authorized federal Medicaid disproportionate share cuts to begin in began in 2014. The theory being, as with Affordable Care Act, it was fully implemented across all states, that there would be more insured people across the country and less uninsured. So thus thus the disproportionate share program was going to be reduced. But those cuts have never happened every year since 2014. And sometimes there's a two-year delay, sometimes there's a three-year, a three-year delay. But these cuts have 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 never happened. Now, currently, right now, the cuts are delayed until December 31 of 2024, which is three months into our into our 2025 fiscal year. So with that, assuming that the federal DISC cuts to Medicaid disproportionate share are not delayed, that's about a 40% impact to the state of Texas, or about 400 million. To UMC, that's about a $20 million reduction. So with that, because of that uncertainty, we have not budgeted for if we were to receive 100% of our Medicaid disproportionate share funds. Now, what's going to happen is currently, right now, we've got the national elections in early November, November 5. Now, after that, and this is what most of the most of the people in the industry are saying, the the Congress that is going to be in place between November 5 of 2024 to December 31 of 2024, more than likely, they're going to pass a 60-day continuing resolution with a with a funding of Medicaid DISC until probably February 28 of 2025. And why is that? Is that when the new Congress comes into place, or the new, if there's a new presidency, the House leadership, Senate leadership, it'll then be up to them as to what they're going to do with these with these Medicaid DISC cuts. So we are hoping that when it comes to that is that the the new Congress in in 2025 will delay these cuts further. But because we we don't know whether that's a certainty, even though it's never happened, we have not budgeted for that. So that's the main reason why currently, right now, UMC is about $15 million negative going into next year. Let me pause on that, see whether there's any questions regarding the the federal Medicaid DISC cuts that are that are currently scheduled.
If if that money doesn't end up coming in, or will it be spent? Or I mean, I know it's not budgeted, but do you have any idea about what you're going to do with it?
Well, okay, the question being that if the cuts are delayed. So obviously, for one, it's going to be additional revenue resources. And there are there are certain elements in in this year's budget, 2025 budget, that we have cut that we would go ahead and and go ahead and and re-implement. So so those are some of the items that we would be looking at. But currently, right now, we've just, we have just, to be conservative, have just have not budgeted for those items.
Do you have a list of those things? I'm just curious.
Don't have them with me right now, but we can probably get that to you in terms of what those, you know, what the, you know, what what that would represent.
I mean, there's some things that in our budget, to stay at a no new revenue rate in light of the inflation rate, especially in in healthcare, we made some very lean decisions in terms of assumptions. For example, on our medical loss ratio, which has been running higher this year, we're challenging challenging ourselves to have a lower loss rate in terms of the UMC side and the children's side made some assumptions as well. I don't, you know, if if we have the ability to to receive those additional funds, 20 million, we would, you know, see about trying to reserve for me as much as possible because, quite honestly, I mean, we still have the challenge of the unknown, you know, that may happen. And sometimes it's we we're run lean in terms of rainy days. But when you consider the things that we still haven't addressed, for example, still addressing the living wage issue that we'll probably have to wait till fiscal year '26, those are things. And then I think as we go across the unexpected, for example, if our bond was not to pass that we're pursuing, then there may be some things that that money would be used for in terms of helping us build out things like the observation unit to sort of de-stress our ED. But we can provide a list of options so that you can have that.
Thank you.
At the bottom of page 25, looking at the UMC's 2025 patient service revenue. Now, first thing, when you look at the surgical hospitals, surgical hospitals acquired last June of 2023. It was initially scheduled to start in 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 September, but because of licensing issues with the state and also preparedness with with joint commission that did not get started until January of 2024. So currently, right now, in the 2024 year, we'll probably have really about six months of of full operations with January, February, March being the ramp-up months. But in 2025, we we expect to be fully ramped up. And what that means is that even currently, right now, it's a it's a 40-bed hospital. And our census is already running about 30 in terms of inpatient beds. So we so so we expect to, you know, for that for that occupancy rate to to go higher. But also on the outpatient surgery side, we we do expect to see a sizable increase in terms of outpatient surgeries, mainly at the at the surgical hospital. We talked about 959 additional surgery cases. And then also with the, not only at the UMC with the satellite ERs, but also at the surgical hospital, we're budgeting about another 3,700 additional emergency room visits. Currently, we do about 95,000 total emergency room visits, about 60, 65,000 at the at the main campus, and then about 30,000 at the two satellite emergency rooms. Additional inpatient admissions, as we continue to work on our average length of stay initiative. And what that means is that over the past 18 months or so, we've been trying to to decrease our our average length of stay, not prematurely, but just trying to see whether if if patients are are ready to be discharged and whether they're just waiting for an MRI or or, you know, what are the cases may be, trying to improve the throughput process. Because the sooner we get patients out the door, then we can turn that bed over and create that into an additional inpatient admissions. Between 23, 2023 and 2024, we've been able to decrease our average length of stay about half a day, which has resulted in almost about 100 additional inpatient admissions at UMC Maine. Now, with that, we'll also be having inpatient admissions at the surgical hospital. That's where the 1,300 are are coming from. And then also additional outpatient visits of about 37,000. As we look at other things in terms of what's impacting the UMC and also El Paso Health, when you look at our our associates, currently, right now, we do have a planned 2% merit with a total cost of about 5.6 million, which does include employee benefits. That would be effective December of 2024. This is consistent with previous year's implementation. We normally have our annual evaluations in October and then with the with the planned merit of 2% starting in in December 2024. And over the previous years, I think we've had, I think this has been consistent going back about the last three years, where we've been at about 2%. Prior to that, during the pandemic years, I think we went the increase of about 1% during the pandemic. We do have planned market adjustments. Every couple or every year, we do look at approximately about a third of our workforce and and compare those to the market, you know, particularly with it with the for-profit hospitals to see how we are doing salary-wise. And we and we've identified certain key positions that we do have planned market adjustments. And that's that will be implemented starting in October 2024 with a cost of about 2.1 million. Yeah, to also include employee benefits. The next slide, when we talk about El Paso Health, a couple of times, we've already mentioned STAR plus. They start September 1 of 2024. Now, the they start September because that's a that's a state state fiscal year, which starts September. Our our fiscal year starts October. As I mentioned earlier, I think they already have about 9,300 STAR plus members that have already been officially enrolled with with El Paso Health. Now, from a market perspective, there's about 22,000 covered lives with STAR plus program. And HHSC's goal would be to at least with with Molina being the other STAR plus providers, that both El Paso Health and and Molina have approximately 11,000 members each. So that's so so that's going to start. Now, with that, there's going to be about a $195 million increase in premium revenue, which is offset by 172 million of of related medical expenses. So to give you perspective in terms of the severity or the the difference between a STAR plus member versus a STAR and CHIP member, currently, right now, STAR and CHIP, when when we talk about premium revenue per member per month that El Paso Health receives from this from the state, it's about $350. A STAR plus member, it's going to be about $1,800. So that's about six times as much. And that's just because of the severity of the of the of the healthcare that that STAR plus members need. So it's so that's a that's a main reason as to why El Paso Health revenue is growing, growing by about 200 million, simply because of the STAR plus STAR plus program. Now, currently, right now, in in September, here in about 25 days, as the as they start being enrolled into STAR plus, we do expect that during the initial months, three, four months, that the medical loss ratio is going to be high as they transition from one managed care organization to was it to El Paso Health. And that's strictly by design per the state in terms of just ensuring that there's no loss of medical coverage for those STAR plus members that are going to be transitioning to El Paso Health. And about the third, fourth, or fifth month of that, then that's really when the health management will start, will start for those for those members. So we do expect the medical or budgeting right now that the medical loss ratio on STAR plus alone to be 89%. Normally, where where we where we'd like to target in terms of medical loss ratio across all lines of businesses is about 85%. So so we are being conservative right now for 2025 regarding regarding STAR plus. And looking at the STAR and on CHIP programs, the current programs that that they do have, we are, we do expect a rate increases from 2024 and about $17 million in additional premium revenue coming into El Paso Health. Now, that medical loss ratio for 2025 is going to be about 87%. That's what we have budgeted for. It's been higher this year just simply because of the higher utilization. Then also with the Medicaid redeterminations that have happened because post, was it post-pandemic, the members that have that have remained with STAR and CHIP, they are very high utilizers. So that medical loss ratio has been higher in 2024 than than in previous years. Now, one item I did want to bring up all those, this this is 12 months from now. HHSC did repercure the STAR and the CHIP programs across the state in the El Paso service delivery area. El Paso Health was re-awarded the STAR and CHIP programs starting September 1 of 2025, which is about 14 months from now. Now, the the new contracts have yet to be signed. Normally, they try to target one year, 12 months before those contracts are signed. Now, currently, in other service delivery areas, there are some incumbent STAR and CHIP Medicaid plans that did not get re-awarded in their in their service delivery area. So what we are hearing is that there there could be potential litigation from from these three other managed care plans and and other service delivery area, service delivery areas against HHSC. And then depending upon the timing of it, there could be possible the legis, state legislature involvement on this. Although it's a, so this is some of the uncertainty regarding STAR and CHIP, starting September 1 of 2026, we just wanted just to bring that to your attention. But here in El Paso, El Paso Health was re-awarded the STAR, the STAR and CHIP program. And then one, then one of the other things that Jacob was talking about earlier in terms of when we look at diversifying El Paso Health, you know, they've been doing STAR and CHIP for so many years. Now, we're into STAR plus. And now we're we're also looking into getting ready for entry into what we're hoping a January 1, 2026 date into Medicare Advantage. So there's also some costs in here related as El Paso Health gets ready for for Medicare Advantage. On the El Paso Children's Hospital side, one of the major things that is happening there, Jacob mentioned earlier, is there the eighth floor that's been a shelled unit since that was constructed, that's going to be ready for for operations October 1 with additional 26 beds. Now, this is a great story here because how this was being built is that El Paso Children's did make a prepayment on their bankruptcy debt of about 10 to 11 million dollars. So that's how we were able to, was it to pay for this? So this is going back to the bankruptcy debt back in January 2016. The bankruptcy debt was about 48 million. I do expect that the debt from El Paso Children's to UMC will now be close to about 35 million here by was it by by September 30 of 2024. So that's a great story in terms of years ago, coming out of bankruptcy. And now that they've actually made a lot of debt payments towards a lot of payments towards that debt. The other part for 2025, we will have a full 12-month operations. Maria mentioned it earlier about the multi-specialty clinic. That's going to have additional outpatient visits and then also with the urgent care clinic. And then on on the El Paso Children's associates, they also do have a planned 2% merit, about 1.4 million. Now, they are on a on a different cycle in terms of the, was it the merit increase? Their merit increases are going to be about April in 2025. Now, over the past couple of years as well, El Paso Children's has had about a 2% merit merit increase.
Now, Michael, so that means it's a delayed merit increase?
Not a delayed, they've always been on a on a different cycle than we are. UMC and El Paso Health is on December, and El Paso Children's has been April. It's just a, it's just a different cycle. It's not a delay. It's just that their their merit increases have always been in April. And we talked in terms of now from the from the taxpayer. So how so how does this impact the the taxpayer? Now, here on slide, on slide 31, we're looking at the past seven years, going back to 2017 as to UMC's property tax rate. You'll see in total, back in 2017, 23.4 cents. And currently, where we we are, we're about 23.5 cents. So we're virtually at the same property tax rate than we were seven years ago. And yes, we did go up in the 2020, 2021. But in in two of the last three years, UMC has adopted the the no new revenue rate. Now, with our plan currently right now for this year to adopt the the no new revenue rate, that will make now three of the last four fiscal years that we have adopted the the no new revenue tax rate. You'll see in terms of on the debt service component, right now, it's about 3.8 cents. And on maintenance and operations, about 19.8 cents. Now, when you look at the at the property tax bill, this is a similar slide that we've been showing in in previous years. We have gone back to the last four years when we look at the at the five largest taxing components. You look at El Paso Community College, about 4% of the tax bill. University Medical Center, roughly about 8%. El Paso County, 14, 15, 16%. The City of El Paso, 29%. The City of El Paso, twenty-nine percent, and then El Paso School District, about forty-four percent, although this last year they did drop to about forty-one percent. Looking at U M C specifically, back in twenty twenty-one, you'll see we were at twenty-six point eight cents. We do it, we reduced that by a penny in twenty twenty-two to twenty-five point eight cents. That was one of the years that we did adopt the no-new revenue rate. Then in twenty twenty-three, we also adopted the no-new revenue rate at twenty-three point five cents. And then twenty twenty-four, we our rate, we virtually stayed at the same rate in twenty twenty-four than we did in twenty twenty-three. So we do expect now on this on this next slide, let me let me talk about, before I talk about this year's, the twenty twenty-five proposed tax rate, we show this annually, and there hasn't been material changes, but when we compare U M C to the other four, four large public hospital districts, now, this is taken off of the the most recent twenty twenty-three audited audited financial statements. With the exception of University Health in San Antonio that has a December thirty-one year end, all other large public hospital districts have a have a September thirty year end. U M C Hospital only, not the not the hospital district, but our revenue budget's eight hundred and twenty-nine million. If you pay attention to the gray piece of the of the pie chart, our property tax revenue, one hundred and thirty-three million, about sixteen percent of the revenue budget. Parkland Hospital in Dallas, total operate revenue budget of three point two billion. Their property tax revenue is eight hundred million, or twenty-five percent of their revenue budget. Harris Hospital in Houston, two point five billion. Their property tax revenue is about thirty-three percent of their of their operating revenue budget. University Hosp University Health in San Antonio, two point four billion, twenty-five percent of their revenue budget comes from property taxes. And John Peter Smith Hospital in Fort Worth, one point seven billion in total revenue budget. You'll see that thirty-four percent of the revenue budget comes from property taxes. So we always like to show this slide because it does show that that we rely less on property taxes for our for our revenue budget, and where that comes from is mainly from the offset's going to be in the increase in patient service revenue that U M C El Paso has compared to the other four large hospital districts in the state. Now, when we look now closer in terms of where the proposed twenty twenty-five tax rates, if you look at the at the at the twenty twenty-five column, I do show what is computed as a no-new revenue rate and then also the voter approval rate. I do show what the what last year's rate is, but really, for for purposes of this discussion, you'll see that the the final twenty twenty-three certified values, when we adopted the budget last year, back in last August, was about sixty-two billion, but the final certified values that were released by the Central Press Legislature just a couple of days ago, once after all the all the protests were settled and 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 that kind of stuff, that was up to about sixty-three point five billion for the twenty twenty-three final certified values. Where we are right now for twenty twenty-five is that the tax total taxable value is about sixty-nine billion. So that's representing about a seven and a half percent increase in taxable value in twenty twenty-five compared to twenty twenty-four. So what that means when you look at the total tax rate, you'll see that on the no-new revenue rate, that will now decrease. We currently are at twenty-three point five cents. The no-new revenue rate would decrease to twenty-one point nine cents. The maintenance and operations would be about eighteen point five cents, and the interest in debt service about about three point three cents. When you look at the voter approval rate, the main difference there is going to be on the maintenance and operations side where you where you take the no-new revenue rate component of the maintenance and operations of eighteen point five, multiply that by eight percent, so you can get a max of nineteen point nine. So the voter approval rate for this year will be twenty-three point three cents, and you'll see that's even less than the current rate of twenty-three point five cents simply because of the increase in property values. So this budget currently does assume the was it the no-new revenue rate? So in total property tax dollars, we're expecting to get about a hundred and forty-nine, hundred and fifty million for twenty twenty-four, and that'll slightly increase to a hundred and fifty-two million mainly because of new property values increase from last year and then new property values that were there that were coming to the property tax rolls in twenty twenty-five. When you look down below in terms of from an average home value, you'll see the average net taxable value for under twenty twenty-three is about a hundred ninety-one thousand five hundred and three dollars. Now, the average net taxable value is about two hundred and five thousand nine fifty-six. So to the based upon the average taxable value of two hundred, two hundred and five thousand nine fifty-six, the property tax owner would have paid four hundred and fifty-one dollars in twenty twenty-four. They'll be paying four hundred and fifty-two dollars in twenty twenty. So it's a some minimal impact there in terms of the the overall, the property tax, property tax owner going from last year's tax rate to this year's tax rate. Let me pause there and see whether there's any discussions we have regarding the the proposed tax rate for twenty twenty-five. On looking at our debt service, now, one of the items that we do that we do use are capital from operations are are to pay the hospital district debt. So there are breakdowns between what is tax-supported versus what is not tax-supported. On the tax-supported, we do have our our general obligation refunding bonds of twenty seventeen and then our our combination tax revenue certificates of obligation series twenty thirteen and then the twenty thirteen refunding bonds. Those latter two are the ones that are getting refunded next Tuesday. So we do expect a a little bit of savings in terms of the was it the debt service? So so what will happen is that even though we may adopt a interest in debt service component based upon the existing debt service for twenty twenty-five, if there are savings because of the refunding, then whatever tax dollars from that are collected on the interest in debt service component, then that will be carried forward to pay the debt service for next year. So I wanted just to bring that up to bring that to your attention. So the total tax-supported debt service is about twenty-three point six million. Now, the non-tax-supported, this goes to the revenue bonds that we got last year for the purchase of the surgical hospital. That was a fifty-five million dollar revenue bond. Its annual debt service right now is about three point six million. So as a whole, the total debt service for next year is about twenty-seven point two million. And finally, when you look at our the routine capital budget, now, one of the items here that we always that I always tried to look at, because a couple of years ago, the rating agencies did pick up on this in terms of from a standpoint is is are you investing in your routine capital, you know, the, you know, equal to the depreciation expense? Earlier years, like say, in the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen timeframe, on the U M C side, we had held back a little bit on our on our capital just because we're we didn't have as much cash as we did back then. And we did get deemed from the rating agencies because knowing that they're going to say you're going to need to eventually replace some of that, you know, some of that routine capital. But I'm glad to report that currently right now, at least with all three entities, rating agencies did note that, you know, we are, we are reinvesting in our in our routine capital equal to what the annual depreciation expense is. So for U M C next year is about seventeen million. El Paso Children's, six point two million. And U M C and El Paso Children's is primarily equipment-related, and El Paso Health, about two point eight million. Most of that's mostly I T-related in terms of their investment and their and their software for the for the medical claims payments. So with that, that is the summary of our of the hospital district's twenty twenty-five budget in terms of the major components. Now, in the in the budget books that that you were handed out, there was there was a budget narrative about, you know, forty-five pages long, goes into a lot more detail, but the items that I presented were really the the major items that represents the hospital's district revenues and hospital district's expenses. With that, I'll I'll turn it over to the court if there's any questions.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, I've just on the on the first couple of slides, when we're looking at the increase in in patients and and days and such such, just had a quick question. I mean, is that due to increased market share or are just people using the hospital more? Because we don't have population growth in El Paso County.
If you're looking, let me find if I can find the slide here just to make, he's talking this one right here?
Yeah, admissions, yeah, these ones, where we have admissions, outpatient, inpatient, you know, there's increases all over across the board, basically. And so my question is, is that due to people being sick or more more people being more sick? Or is it we're 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 increasing our market share?
We're picking up market share. So, for example, you look at the market share in patients with insurance, we're picking up market share, so more people are choosing to come. And I think in part, you know, not just the service level levels, but we also have a a number of specialists that we brought in that also help in terms of providing additional service we weren't providing before. Our clinics are getting busier, and they're a referral source to our hospitals should they need it. I think in terms of it's not, I don't think a function of population growth, per se. In terms of acuity, we're seeing an increase in acuity. So some patients coming to us are sicker, and that could be cyclical, but that we do project that that's going to continue to increase, but it's primarily more people or market share coming to us.
And that's for both U M C and also El Paso Children's. El Paso Children's back on, yeah, back around the twenty-eight, twenty seventeen, eighteen timeframe, you can see that their that their market share has really grown. Now, you'll see in in one year that their admissions did decrease to twenty-nine forty-three from their previous year, but that's all COVID nineteen related. But you see, post-COVID, you can see they're back up to the forty-three hundred share and that, so, yeah, that's also market share-driven.
So both children's and U M C have grown since twenty seventeen about twenty-eight percent in admissions.
And for U M C for twenty twenty-five, keep in mind that we will also have an additional forty beds for an entire twelve months with the El Paso Surgical Hospital. And even currently right now, I think they're already between twenty-five and thirty inpatient admission, inpatients at the surgical hospital. So that that additional forty beds has is providing temporary relief for, you know, for the capacity issues that that U M C is having.
I've got to say, what a rebound for El Paso Children's from bankruptcy that you are a big part of as one of our reps to where they stand now.
Well, I think many, and I think Commissioner Stout, you were greatly involved in the bankruptcy hearings. I don't think, I think many never thought that this day would come, but when they hit their ten-year anniversary, they were on on target despite bankruptcy to what the original projections were. And and I think it was in a at their ten-year anniversary today, they not only are paying on the on the large debt, they made a balloon payment on it that we were able to use to build out that eighth-floor shell for additional patient space because they've run out of space. So El Paso Health has been very successful. El Paso Children's has been very successful, and U M C is also shared in that, and it's reflected in the growth overall.
Great job.
A very telling statistic is in two thousand and three, the insured population at U M C was less than forty-five percent. Points out is that U M C is becoming a hospital of first choice, not last.
And that, yeah, and and Steve is correct. Going back to, I started in about two thousand and six, and it was roughly about fifty-fifty. So but each year, it's almost like that percentage increase continues to grow one percent, one percentage point each year. Now, with the with the first, the early months of a of the El Paso Surgical Hospital, U M C Maine has about a seventy-two, seventy-three percent funded payer mix, still a lot better than where it was fifty-fifty back in the mid-two thousands. But the surgical hospital, that's a right, right now, it's about eighty-five percent of funded patients. So we're seeing a lot more funded patients going to the surgical hospital, and that and that that primarily is 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 a lot of local community physicians are are wanting to do their their cases and procedures at the at the surgical hospital. So that that's proven out to be a very good investment.
And you and that hospital's located at a very, growth-wise, it's a CIP code is twenty-eight, and they're almost adjoining that CIP code, so a great location.
We've enjoyed some great growth in terms of surgeries and patient admissions, and we project additional growth as more physicians start going there. We have surgeries being performed by Texas Tech surgeons as well as community surgeons and employed surgeons, and they really like the atmosphere. It's a lot easier to get in and out. We've invested in, you know, like the Da Vinci Five robot, the Mako robot, and other things that physicians use as state-of-the-art to be able to be more effective in the surgeries they do.
And on the, there were a couple of different slides that had pie charts when that looked at the the overall break breakdown of the the revenue and expenditures. So this one, yeah, right there, so that the one point six seven billion, that's that's district-wide, that includes children's and El Paso First.
That is correct, yes.
Because you showed us another pie chart that had about eight hundred and sixty million, which was, I think, just U M C's budget?
Only U M C, and that's fiscal year twenty-three.
Right, and that and that was the one where you were comparing the the different percentages in the in the property tax revenue. That's so property tax revenue just goes to U M C's, U M C's.
That is correct.
Doesn't go to El Paso First or El Paso Children's.
So, so the pie chart that shows sixteen percent, that's comparing hospital only with the other fours, public health hospitals, the big publics, if you will. The other four, though, include pediatrics because they don't have a separately licensed children's hospital. In ours, we do not include El Paso Children's information because it is separately licensed. When you look at, and that's based on fiscal year twenty-three, when you're looking at our budget, which is based on what we proposed for fiscal year twenty-five, it includes all in the district, and when we show the overall district revenue coming in, nine percent of that revenue is property taxes, but it is only used for U M C Hospital.
Okay. And then on the on the on this slide here, thanks for, you read my mind, I wanted to see this slide, the the intergovernmental transfer, the twenty-three million, so are we I G T-ing for the other hospitals again? Is that is that what that is?
But this, yes. So the intergovernmental transfer, this is, this is the what we call the state share for for the Medicaid supplemental programs. This is made up for both El Paso Children's and also a U M C. Now, although we do collect as part of what's called the Local Provider Participation Fund, where we do assess a an assessment fee to the other private hospitals, was it here in El Paso, that is not reflected here as an expense, that is simply on our balance sheet where we collect the money, but then we also then but then
Pass through, basically.
Pass through to the state, so that's not reflected in the revenues and expenses. But but that is a but that is still a program where we do assess, it's called an assessment fee of about six percent of their respective revenue budget. So so that is what is used to to fund the Medicaid supplemental programs, primarily CHIRP, the Comprehensive Hospital Rating Increase Program, for for the tenant facilities, H C A facilities, and also El Paso Children's.
So the revenue generated, for example, to hospitals of Providence, which is, you know, free and clear after they get reimbursed for their L P P F fund, is about fifty-five million, I think, this year. For Las Palmas del Sol, it's about forty million. So those additional revenues coming into the city to them are not reflected here. They are represented in their own financials. But it shows how through the district, even our private hospitals are able to benefit through programs like this.
And Michael or Jacob, I know that I I may have missed it, but there are some transfers from for-profit hospitals that are transferred into U M C when they stabilize a patient, then because of non-insurance, then they they go to U M C. Do you have a chart or any kind of indicators to show that impact?
Not in this book, but we could probably get that. So we get fifty-five percent of the trauma transfers we get are from other hospitals. There are transfers that do happen because it's a higher level of care. They they're dealing with a patient that needs a much higher level of care that that we are the only ones that can provide. Then there are the occasional a transfer because, you know, maybe they're not insured or or not well-insured. We can get that information for you, but that happens as well.
I I think that's very telling, and it and it impacts your budget.
Oh, most certainly, yes, it does, yes.
I I just wanted to to thank you all for for the work that you did on this budget to 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 stay at the at the no-new revenue rate, you know, as we're moving forward and and looking at the bond, you know, I think it was prudent for us to 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 try to stay within the no-new revenue rate. And, you know, I know that I want to, I want to continue to push for increasing that that living wage, minimum wage to a living wage. We're still not there at the county either, but and and I would encourage if we do end up, end up getting that or if the the there's a delay in in cutting out the DISH program, I mean, that twenty million, if we would, if we can look at possibly an increase, I mean, that's, I I know that you have a lot of needs, but please don't discard that, you know, I think that that's important, that, you know, as as public entities, we're not contributing to folks having to live off the system, so to speak.
That's a, that, Commissioner Stout, that definitely is something that we look at, and I think it's, our commitment to that is indicative of the changes that we've made, you know, going from ten dollars to you know, going from $10 to $15. And so we're definitely looking at that. The big challenge is that once you make that commitment, it's an, it's an annual commitment, right?
Right, it continues.
And so we want to be certain that we're being prudent with the dollars that we're, that we're getting in. And, and I think it's a continued quandary for us is, is to how, how much is enough to have in reserves? And, and we've been sitting at a very low number for a long time, at, at least from our perspective. You know, we, we'd like to be in a position where we're actually a lot healthier from a cash position. But then at the same time, you want to invest in the community, right? And so it's important that we, that we balance that. But we're definitely aware of that.
And I, I mean, I appreciate over the years, you all, you know, listening to our requests and, and, and doing that because I think it's important. And I also wanted to, to reiterate my thanks, you know, for just, just the service that you all provide to this community. I was very touched by the video that you all put together on August 3rd. You know, we, we can't forget all, all of the, the care, medical care professionals that, and, and the amazing work that, that you all did in responding to that, to that emergency.
If I can, if I can just comment on that as well. You know, one of the, one of the biggest challenges for, for our, our team members is the fact that they're, they're constantly, you know, and selflessly, you know, serving the community. And, and I think a lot of times we forget the, the mental health and wellness impact of it. And, and one of the things that I'm most proud of is the fact that over the last, you know, five years in, in 2020, we, we actually took a step to provide some relief for that. And, and it was so well received that then, you know, we're adding a second, you know, individual to help for that. And, and serving on other, other boards on a statewide level where the mental health and wellness is, is, is the focus. I can tell you that El Paso is leading the way. I was on a call yesterday with some, with, on one of those boards and, and they were talking about some work that is being done at Parkland Memorial in Dallas. And, and they're just getting to the point to implement some of the things that we're already doing. So El Paso definitely is, is leading the way.
I also have to reiterate my thanks for the, the willingness to work with my office and, and, you know, creating the geriatric ED certification and, and also having a geriatric focus on the, the central clinic that's proposed in, in the bond. Dr. Mena, thank you. Jacob, thank you to the other board members and, and folks that, that have been working on, on us with that. Thank you very much. I, I think that's going to be something that this community is, is going to be very proud of and, and, and needs.
Well, we'll be, we're getting close on our geriatric clinic certification at our other clinics. As soon as we get that, we'll include you and Ms. Jones. Well deserved. You were the impetus in pushing that. Remember, we, we also went with, and, and thank you to Dr. Men on our board to arrange a trip at UT Health Houston that showed us geriatric programs that were in place and that, that would be something we're working on. We're pushing heavily on the geriatric ED certification as well. And now we're also looking into geriatric trauma and so how we can address that as well. So proud of that. And, you know, when you see the video, it brings back the memories. I mean, the hospital, the, the community went through the August 3rd mass shooting. We all know where we worked when that happened. And, and the, the weeks and months and years of things going through there. And at that time, our trauma surgeon, Dr. Tyrock said, in six months to a year, we're going to start facing traumatic, post-traumatic stress syndrome because of what everybody went through. But before that even happened, then COVID hit. And then that created even a greater impact. Our staff is there every day. For example, that day of the August 3rd shooting, we were still open to all trauma. We were still getting other trauma cases. Every day we see these cases. It doesn't stop. And the, you know, our staff, you know, by investing in these counselors, these psychologists that can meet with our staff, the things we do in terms of improving, you know, the, the atmosphere in our community, within the fact that we look at all levels of our staff to make sure that they're properly compensated. Everything we do is designed to create a better work environment for our staff and provide a, a haven if they have a need for any kind of counseling or help. And so we're proud of that. But it is, you know, when you look at that video and you listen to Dr. Tyrock or some of our staff, you realize even today, five years later, it, it's an emotional thing. That'll never go away. And so our obligation is not only to provide care for our community, all members, regardless of the ability to have insurance or not, but it's also to look after our own. And that includes all our members, that we have to provide great care for them because they're an investment for us and they made a commitment in our community and we need to be there for them. And I thank all of you because when you think about that we had a Level One Trauma Program ready to go, that we had the, the number of physicians we have, that we had the staff that we had and all the tools we had, the investment we made in acquiring personal protective equipment before COVID really hit El Paso. All that was done with the support US Commissioners and our county judge provided in that foresight and allowing us to do the things that helped our community be better prepared to face these kinds of things. And hopefully we don't see another pandemic. But I have a lot of confidence in our team and in our leadership, both at our board and our commissioners, that we'll be ready for it.
Commissioner, if I may, going back to your comment about the tax rating and also to Chairperson Gallardo, in terms of, you know, although we, you know, I, I welcome the, the ratings reaffirmations by the bond rating agencies, they all did indicate, though, that, that, that our balance sheet compared to other hospitals is, is weak, that, that they would like to see our, our days cash on hand higher. And from that standpoint, if we want to move from the upper medium grade to the high grade, that would, you know, take almost a doubling what our days cash on hand is. And to your comment about the no new revenue rate, I, as the Chief Financial Officer, I'm always at least trying to keep up with inflation. I was pushing for something higher than a no new revenue rate and, but our board challenged us to keep it at the, at the, at the no new revenue rate. So with that, I would have to, you know, thank our board for, you know, for challenging us to, I mean, you know, to keep it at the no new revenue rate.
Yeah, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I just, you know, overall, seeing the big picture, I just want to commend, you know, the UMC and the entire district and board for, you know, we, we saw the problems and the lack of capacity that we had when the pandemic hit. And I'm glad that we've, you know, invested in that surgical hospital because it, that'll keep certainly when something like that happens from delaying some of the necessary surgeries that obviously were delayed because of the capacity at the hospital. And so, but what it tells us now is that we still need to catch up because you guys are doing so good that people are now coming to us as a hospital of choice. And so now, I think we, you know, basically bids us that we need to keep up with that demand to here locally take care of our constituents and make sure that we keep doing the great service that you guys are doing. So I, I want to thank you all for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Michael. I just had a couple of questions about the Medicaid DISH reduction. I know you all are being conservative by assuming that the reduction, the 20 million reduction is going to take place. But is there hope? I, I mean, how hopeful can we be that maybe the reductions are going to be delayed some more? I know they've already been delayed for a long time.
Yeah. And they've, okay, and this is my personal opinion, but I, I'm, I'm more hopeful that the, that the DISH cuts will be.
Delayed.
Will be delayed. Prior to this year, unfortunately, when, because we went through the same thing this past year. Unfortunately, the, the, the decision was only made just to get it through December 31st of 2024. But the current Congress, there was bipartisan support on both the, the House and the Senate to, was it to delay the cuts. The question as to why December 31st, 2024, probably just political reason because there's a national election, we'll let either the, the, the new Congress deal with it. But I am hopeful that it will get delayed simply because they've never been implemented in the past 10 years.
Well, I, I hope so.
The other thing I would say too is that the state assumes until federal Congress does officially delay the cut, they assume the cut's going to take place. So their reimbursement and, and requests of us are assuming that the cut is going to take place. I think one year we made an assumption that it wouldn't, that something wouldn't happen and it did. And it was a very tough year for us. So we're always going to be conservative till we get official word. We're hoping, you know, with, with an election year, we don't know what's going to happen, but we're hoping that it does get delayed because we, as well as all other safety net hospitals, as well as all other private hospitals, really depend on this. And so if it does get delayed, then we'll have a list to be able to show what we're planning on doing.
Great. And because if it does, if the cuts do get delayed, then the hospital goes from a negative 15 million to a positive five.
Five, right. Correct.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I'll be optimistic too then.
From your mouth.
Thank you. Have we, Ms. Schumacher, have we come to that point?
Thank you, Commissioner Loon. Anna Schumacher is the county attorney. As a procedural matter, would UMC or the hospital district like to make their motion first and then we can propose our motion?
Yes. Jennifer, would you read that, please?
Yes. Mr. Villa, would you read that into record, please? We'll take one, each one separately.
And just for clarification, are we proceeding to the, the next work, work session?
Yeah. Okay, so good question. I guess currently we do plan two budget work sessions. The second one is tentatively scheduled if needed. So I guess we need to address that question, whether we need to have that second one or not.
Doesn't seem to me like we need it.
No.
And, and statutorily, we're not required to have a public hearing since we're not exceeding the no new revenue rate. So we would scrap the public hearing as well.
Or, yes, that is correct.
Okay.
But it would come back to the court on August 26th for final adoption?
Of the budget.
Correct.
Yes, that is correct.
And so I'll go ahead and read the motion language.
Yes, please.
In accordance with Texas Health and Safety Code Section 281.096, propose the new, the no new revenue rate for the El Paso County Hospital District, which is a tax rate of $0.219526 per $100 assessed value. That consists of $0.185607 per $100 assessed value for the purpose of maintenance and operations and $0.033919 per $100 assessed value for interest and debt service of the hospital district for consideration and adoption by the El Paso County Commissioners.
Do we have a motion?
So move.
And the second?
Second.
Thank you. We have our first and second. Mr. Gallardo?
Yes.
Dr. Mena?
Yes.
Mr. DeGroot?
Yes.
Mr. Torres?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion as read into record by Mr. Villa is approved.
The sec, the second motion, approve the fiscal year 2025 operating capital budget and recommend for consideration and final approval of said budget by the El Paso County Commissioners Court pursuant to Texas Health and Safety Code Section 281.091.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
We have a first and a second, Jennifer.
Thank you. Mr. Gallardo?
Yes.
Dr. Mena?
Yes.
Mr. DeGroot?
Yes.
Mr. Torres?
Yes.
Thank you. The second motion as read into record by Mr. Villa is approved.
Thank you. Commissioners Anna Schumacher is the county attorney. For your consideration, your motion would be to move to add the Commissioners Court Agenda at its regular meeting on August 26, 2024, an item to discuss and vote on the proposed property tax rate for the El Paso County Hospital District does business as University Medical Center of El Paso. The hospital district has proposed a rate of $0.219526 per $100 assessed valuation consisting of $0.185607 per $100 assessed valuation for maintenance and operations and a rate of $0.033919 per $100 assessed valuation for payment of the principal and interest on the debt of the hospital district. The proposed tax rate does not exceed the no new revenue rate. Further, and in accordance with Texas Tax Code Chapter 26, publish notice of a meeting to vote on the proposed tax rate to be held on Monday, August 26, 2024, at 9:30 a.m. in the Commissioners Court Chamber's third floor, Room 303, El Paso County Courthouse, 500 East San Antonio Avenue. Members of the public may attend in person or participate and address the court via video conference or telephone. Instructions on how to participate via video conference are available at epcounty.com. A notice of this meeting will be posted at the courthouse and online at wwwepcounty.com. That would be the motion.
Thank you, Anna. So move.
We, we have a motion from Commissioner Stout and a second from Commissioner Olgin. Voting is open.
I didn't bring my machine, so I.
Thank you, sir. Motion carries. Judge Samanu goes absent. The motion carries.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you for your support.
And I've got to say this, just to further cement this into what the media may be reporting, this is a no new revenue tax rate proposal, which is commendable. And I've got to say, just what, follow up on what was said earlier, that during the pandemic, we, we never know what we prevent. We know what we don't prevent. I mean, you have in the hospital, you see the stats, but what we prevent, we, we usually don't know. And I've got to commend the way you handled all this pandemic, all these months and also our own county staff. Betsy, what a tremendous job you did. I saw other cities having so many problems where through, sometimes no fault of their own, sometimes yes, but how El Paso managed everything. And we were really almost at the heart of the COVID spread. So we were very lucky and really I commend all of you and your staffs. And Betsy, tremendous job. It was a 24-hour-a-day time that we came through it all together. And I, I just kind of be proud of our, of our association and our city.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You all so much. And I would, I would just say that it, you know, it definitely is something that the whole community can be proud of because this is our hospital, right? And, and as a community, we invest in our hospital. And, and I would just say that, you know, from my perspective, and, and I think I, I speak on behalf of the board, we're very honored to, to, to be sitting in this position and, and we take it very serious. But, you know, when you, when you talk to your friends and, and family and, and they talk about the investment that they're making, it, it's a, it's a proud conversation because it is a really great return on investment for our community and something we're really proud of.
And being, becoming a hospital of choice, that says a lot.
Very proud of that.
But thank you.
Ms. Jennifer? I, I think with no further business, we can adjourn.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
We are adjourned on our side.
Yes, time is 2:29 p.m.